One more second. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wilmete zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the role?
Mr. Falcoff.
Yes, here, present.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Pelletan.
Yes.
Mr. Sermon.
Yes.
Ms. Choke Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under the stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this evening, we're conducting our business in compliance with the state law. As usual, this meeting has been conducted, is being broadcast live on our local cable access channel six. It is also being broadcast on the Internet on YouTube Live. And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwilmet/live. To participate in a meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the Village's website at www.wilmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel Six or on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 169-393-586. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and email to comdev@wilmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests joining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the application that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the applications meet the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on November 10th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally binding by our recommendations. There is one small exception. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. Also, in our case, this board operates on the basis that we need at least four board members to give a positive recommendation in order for it to proceed. We have six board members tonight and one vacancy. So at least four of the board members present must approve the application and application. In recognition, the fact that we don't have all seven members here, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us this night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next meeting date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is November 4th. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee and ask if you have a comment, so please wait until called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, team chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all our presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on the application will be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding and all testimonies tonight must be given under oath. If you are here planning to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. I assume I don't see anyone, but I assume you're out there, the applicants and any other potential people that will give testimony, so I will just say that you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give. If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case?
Our first case is 2020 Z26, 1239 Gregory Avenue. This request was tabled to tonight. The applicants have withdrawn their requests, so no action is needed at this time.
I have a motion that we, I guess we have to read to the withdrawal.
Nope.
Nothing? Okay. Okay, so we can proceed to the next case.
Our next case is 2020 Z34, 1116 Central Avenue. This is a request for a special use for a limited service restaurant, Koya, and our applicant is online.
Please go ahead. State your name and address.
Hello. Hi, my name is Jay Kim and we're currently in 1116 Central Avenue as a Koya in Wilmete. We've been here, we've been here for about past six years as a Japanese restaurant. And due to pandemic, I think I wrote in a letter of explanation as well, but due to pandemic, you know, we're going through a lot of things and we're kind of rethinking about our, you know, operation and the way we were operating. And it was really hard for us to kind of keep, you know, our employees safe and our customers safe at the same time trying to have the sale so we could, you know, keep going on. But as I think about two, three months goes by, we kind of decided, hey, I think we need to change it up a little bit. We need to, we need to do something, we need to make it something else so that we could, you know, kind of future-proof ourselves as well. So we kind of decided to close down our store and we're trying to do remodeling and stuff. And now we're asking as a limited service, because for past six years, we've been doing just, you know, serving sushi rolls and as a, you know, full-service restaurant. But we're, we had this idea, trend, kind of doing this limited service. I think, I'm not sure if you're familiar with maybe Chipotle or some other, you know, like that call it fast casual, not rather than like a very like a franchise fast food rather than we, what we're trying to do is that we, so I wish I could say that it's some kind of genius way that we figure something out that, you know, we're trying to change the whole, you know, restaurant industry, but it's not, we are, what we're literally doing is let's just say we have a California roll, we're kind of making it into California bowl. So all the ingredients that goes in, you know, we're just kind of making it into a bowl kind of type of thing rather than a roll. So we could kind of, you know, reach out to more people. It would be more convenient. It would be more effective. It would be more easier for us to do it. So we'll be getting rid of a lot of, you know, different difficult, like the sushi stuff and maybe like sashimis. We're kind of getting rid of all of that, but we're trying to focus on bringing, so what the biggest focus that we're trying to do is that in near future, because we couldn't do DoorDash where we couldn't use Grubhub as much as we wanted to because of the cost-wise, it was costing us about 25% of ticket, 30% of our tickets. We just couldn't keep up with that. And for the future-wise, I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to have, the idea is we want to have healthy food. And so we're trying to make it into more like a fast casual. At the same time, we're trying to be more eco-friendly. So we're trying to change our utensils into more like a biodegradable. And, you know, even with the paper bag, we're trying to not use plastic bags. And we're trying to focus on more healthier choice for our customers. Because believe it or not, past six years, we had a lot of customers that's coming in, you know, we had a lot of customers that wants kind of a little bit more healthier foods. They would, they would come in, you know, they would order things that are in a small, on the healthier side. So we're trying to do, we're trying to have healthy choice and the taste, like more little bit of tastier choice. I'm not saying healthy choice is not tasty at all, but as you could think of it as somebody, two person works in and they say one person wants like a chicken teriyaki bowl kind of thing, what we're trying to do, and that person uh-oh, yes, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, the person could just say, "I just want, you know, like the no rice. We just want, you know, salads with chicken teriyaki, maybe like light on the sauce." And the other person could say, "Hey, I want extra rice. I want extra meat and I want extra sauce," and stuff like that. So I mean, I wish I could say, "We are doing this, you know, crazy thing," but we're not. We are, and we're kind of sticking with what we know and with our menus. We're not literally changing of our whole menu and trying to bring this something crazy, new stuff into the thing. We're not, we're just changing the way we serve our customers. We're trying to make it more efficient. And I pray to God that this will never happen again, but if it happens again, I want to be kind of able to be ready to protect our employees, our customers, and our community. And so, yeah, and I think, I think Lucas, when Lucas told me about it, I think the biggest thing was because of selling alcohol. And I think me and my sister and I, we talked about this for a long time, that we kind of wanted to transition into more healthier choice, healthy food. I don't think alcohol kind of fits into that category that what we do. And so we're not doing, we were kind of thinking about not doing alcohol at all in the beginning. So I think it's kind of, it would be better for us to, you know, it would be a perfect time for us to transition into a limited service area. So limited service, so, yeah, I'm sorry. It's just, I'm trying to explain it better, but it just, it's, yeah. So that's where we at and.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kim. Mr. Kim. My colleagues may have some questions for you.
Sure, this is Bob Sermon. I have a couple of questions. Just so I understand, you're going to full service to limited service, and I guess the city must require a change in there. When I look at the floor plan, I'm not, you know, familiar with your space, but it looks like you're, you're building that whole self-service or that, that service line out in front. So what you're really doing is reducing the number of seats in your, in your space and adding that whole area, like, like you said, like a Chipotle line. Okay. So you're actually reducing the number of seats. You know, what we look at a lot of times in, in, in special use requests is how does it impact the parking? And I guess, you know, could you just speak to that? I mean, do you think there will be much of a change?
For the parking wise, sir?
Yes.
Um, I think, so I mean, like you see, we're reducing it, we're reducing the seats. So before it was, you know, you come in, you dine with us, you know, you sit there, you know, you, you sit there for a long time with your family or with your, you know, you know, you have a wine or stuff like that. But I think we're kind of more transitioning into more, you know, you come in, you have, you know, just one meal and you're like, "Hey, here's a good meal," and you just get out. So parking wise, as you may see, we are reducing a lot of seats. And I think especially with this pandemic played a lot in our heads too, because we, we couldn't keep up with the, you know, indoors anyway. So even Highland, the first location that we have, Highland Park, we are not even opening it up. We only strictly, we only do takeouts in there right now. So we're not taking the customers dining because due to my dad is in very high, you know, it was very high dangerous area. So that's what we had. Parking wise, I really, I really didn't think of it as that much, like that we're going to provide another, you know, parking space or anything like that. Yes, sir. So we just.
But I guess, I mean, there really isn't, a lot of things in the village center, there really isn't, you know, much you can do.
Yes, sir.
But I guess my feeling is that you've reduced the seats. So, so then that reduction covers the people that are coming in for takeout.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So it might be an even balance, so it really might not affect the parking.
Bob, I just checked the packet and under the proposal, last paragraph in the proposal on page says that because of the, because the zoning ordinance exempts from the parking requirements uses located in structures erected prior to the 2014 date of the zoning ordinance, the proposed limited service restaurant does not require any relief for parking. So my understanding, and I understand your concern about it, but my understanding is that wasn't an issue that we were considering in this particular case.
Okay.
Mr. Kim, this is Maria Choka Urban.
Hello.
When I read your application, the first thought that occurred to me is, what is a limited service restaurant? What's the definition of that? And I went to the zoning code and found it. And I wonder if I could run through the characteristics of a limited service restaurant and ask you which ones will be in place at your restaurant?
Yes, ma'am.
The first is that you have a permanent menu board on the wall or?
Yes, ma'am. We'll be providing some like essential board, like essential menus that you order. Just, you know, say we have, this is our menu, so you could order that. But as well as we'll be providing, if customer wants custom, they just want, you know, certain things. So it will be just like that, but we will be, we will have our permanent menu board as well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The second characteristic that the zoning ordinance talks about is having the same floor plan over several locations. You mentioned that you have a location in Highland Park. Are the floor plans similar between the two locations?
No, ma'am. It's definitely not. So the first restaurant is they're, they're going to be, operate as a more traditional Japanese restaurant. So this will be our first restaurant that actually, the limited service restaurant that we'll be doing. And frankly, I could say, oh, in the future, we'll be, if we ever, you know, do it, it will be, you know, maybe, maybe standardize it and we'll just make it look like that. But at this point, I think I'm just trying to focus on making this one works rather than thinking about having another restaurant. So no, it will be very unique just to this restaurant. It will be our first restaurant.
Okay. Thank you. The third characteristic is that customers pay for their food before eating it?
Yes, there will be paid before. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. That there will be a self-service condiment bar?
Yes, ma'am. So like maybe soy sauces or maybe certain sauces or utensils, it will be provided for customers. Yes.
Thank you. Be a trash area so that people bust their own tables and remove their trays and dispose of leftovers and utensils and plates?
Yes, ma'am. We'll provide about two or three trash cans or like the trash, like the drawer that will be placed all over the restaurant. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you'll have stationary seating plan or layout. In other words, you can't break apart tables and reshuffle them is what I understood.
Yes.
Can I, can I interrupt to ask? I think on the, the drawing on 1.4, there are two permanent trash I'm sorry.
Riley, we're losing.
Bathroom and one, oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me any better?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm looking at the drawing on 1.4, and I think that on the north wall by the bathroom, that looks to me, and I just want Mr. Kim to confirm.
Yes, sir. It's kind of.
Closer to the entrance.
Yes, yes, we did. We'll have that, that as a, yeah, that will be another trash can and it will be, yeah. Will be for, it will be provided for a store customer to, you know, garbages or, yeah. Okay.
If I could just go back to the characteristics of a limited service restaurant. Most food is prepackaged rather than made to order?
It won't be prepackaged. Most of our food will be made as the customer orders it. So we'll have, you know, the tunas or famines out, but it will be, it will be, everything will be, or make it into order as soon as the customer orders it. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And the last item is that whether there's drive-through service at the restaurant?
Not at all.
Okay. Another question I have for you is, will your days and hours of operations change and in what way?
I think so, ma'am. And that's the very one thing, that was the big, one of the biggest thing that we're thinking about. Because usually being Japanese restaurant, we had a break time, like we were operated from 11:30 to 12 o'clock. We closed it for, you know, break time. We reopen at 4 o'clock or 4, or 5 o'clock to 9 o'clock. So now that we are, we'll be more focusing on the, it will be more limited service area. So I think we'll be, it will be very, it will be, the hours will be a little bit different. I'm thinking maybe 11 to maybe 8 o'clock, we won't be going to the pizzas. And also, we are not, we won't be selling alcohols or anything, so we will be closing a little bit earlier than usual. And but at the same time, we'll be operating a little bit longer. We won't have any break time. But that's one thing that we're still going over it. So, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I have no other questions.
Mr. Kim, this is Brad Falcoff. I just have, I think, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Is the limited service restaurant intended to be temporary or permanent?
What do you mean as a, like the temporary, permanent? Are we gonna?
Something, is this a change just for the COVID period of the pandemic? Or is this something that you're now making a permanent change to your restaurant scheme?
Yes, sir. It will be permanent, sir. I mean, we thought about this idea for past, so we're thinking about doing this in maybe next five or 10 years. We had this idea, but the COVID kind of forced us to happen a little bit sooner than we, we thought it was going to be, but it will be permanent. Yes, sir.
So what happens during the next months, once you open up as your fast casual restaurant? And during that period of time, I'm assuming, and things can change dramatically, but I'm assuming there'll be no sit-down opportunities inside.
Yes, sir.
Will the restaurant still open and will it then just be a carryout restaurant until such time as people can sit?
Yes, sir. That's our idea. And that's why we're transitioning into this kind of type of thing. Because like you say, hopefully it will be faster than we hope. But as you may know, even this week, it's been, you know, the numbers are going up and Highland Parks and all other cities are talking about closing it again and stuff like that. So we don't know what's going to happen. So once we open it up, obviously, we're going to go, you know, follow what city says and we're going to follow the rules. If we have to close it down, we'll close it down. But we'll be operating as like a delivery service. And it'll be more, we'll go through with a more focus on order, online order takeouts. And that was one of our biggest weak point, weakness when we're operating as a Japanese restaurant, just regular full-service Japanese restaurant. We weren't so good with the online ordering because we had so much menus and so much stuff that people would like to modify. So, yes, sir. We'll be more focused on takeouts and deliveries and stuff like this, sir. Yes, sir.
I assume you'll also be carryout. Someone could come in, get their food and leave.
Of course, definitely. Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the applicant? I assume one of the key differences for this kind of place, which is a regular restaurant, is that there will be no waitstaff. Is that correct?
Yes.
And just to clarify, today, per the governor's regulations, there is, is there or isn't there some limited seating permitted inside?
Yes, sir. There, I believe Highland Park is still, I think we could fill up to maybe 25%, 50% of the seating, but it'd have to be, you know, six feet apart.
What about Wilmete?
Wilmete, I believe, I think, yeah, I think so, yes, sir. Because I've seen other restaurants operate. Because, I mean, we closed it back in June, so we haven't operated since June. Yes, sir. So but I believe when I go over to Wilmete, I see other restaurants, they still do operate as, they open up dining. I know Sofia, the new Steakhouse, they opened up. They do, yeah, they do operate dining as well, sir.
Good. Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Do we have any, Lisa, any comments from anyone else on this case?
We have received no emails and there is no one in the YouTube chat. No comment.
So then I can close the testimony and ask for a motion.
This is Bob Sermon. I'll make a motion. I move to recommend granting a request for a special use for a limited service restaurant, Koya, at 1116 Central Avenue. In accordance with the plan submitted, the Zoning Board of Appeals must determine if the use runs with the land or with the use, and it runs with the use. First, I'm glad that you're, you know, you've been a, you know, since 2014 running your restaurant. I'm glad to hear that during these tough times, you're able to, you know, come up with this concept to hopefully transition through and not be a restaurant that disappears. So I'm excited to hear about that. And as far as I know, you've always been a good business at Wilmete. And, you know, I think I can support this change. It really has minimal impact on parking, neighbors, whatever. And I guess I wish you the best and, and I could support it.
Thank you very much. I mean, we wouldn't be doing this if we didn't love Wilmete. I mean, past six years, I personally, because I was in Wilmete all the time, I just fell in love with Wilmete. And I feel like there's just so many potentials and I just feel like I didn't want to, I didn't want to leave the town yet. So I just, I just wanted to give it a one more try. So that's why I'm here. But thank you for your, you know, kind words and thank you very much.
Thank you. Who was the second? Was it Riley?
Yes. I second what Mr. Sermon had to say. And I think that while personally, I'd rather see a full-service restaurant, that's not a consideration in this. And I wish you the best and hope it works out for you. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any comments? Any other comments?
I agree with what's been said. We, speaking personally, we've missed Koya since your closing in June. And I'm happy to have you back in whatever form you come back. And I, I think. And I, I think this will be good for the village, and although you say you're not changing the way restaurants operate, it's not earth-shattering, it is earth-shattering for you compared to the model you had, and I applaud your family for innovating and trying to stay ahead of the curve, so I will be supporting.
Thank you, any other comments?
I just want to add as well, I'll be supporting as well, I hope you'll advertise the heck out of this when you open up, because, you know, Koya does get kind of lost in that block, and there's a lot of competition these days, and I think what you're doing is to be commended, it's, it is different, and it is challenging, and I, I for one certainly look forward to having the opportunity to go, go in and see how it's working.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you.
This is Chris, I too can support this, I think, you know. The restaurant's been, you know, great in that location, and we want to do everything we can to encourage businesses to, to be successful, so.
Same here, Mr. Kim, I, I, I hope that by the time you're ready to go, Central Street, Central Street will not be the.
Construction zone.
Construction zone that it is now.
Yes, sir.
But I wish you all the best, and, and hopefully it's to be very successful. There are no other comments, can we take a vote?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes, so this goes with a positive recommendation, and you may or may not want to be at the, when this is considered by the Village Board of Trustees, Mr. Kim, and they will move on the November 10th.
Sir.
And thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you. Be safe, everyone.
Likewise.
You too.
I move to author as the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020Z34.
I'll stick. Second.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you, can we hear the next case?
Our next case is 2020Z33, 2401 Glenview Road, this is a request for a 14-foot front yard setback variation and a 207.3 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a shed on a legal non-conforming structure, and our applicant is on the phone.
Go ahead, is this Mr. Mian?
Yeah, my name is John Mian, I live at 2401 New Glenview Road.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Mian.
Oh, yeah, I, I would like to construct a, a garden shed in like the northwest corner of my lot, the, the reason I, that really is the only practical location I could put it up, the, because the backyard, well, the lot is irregular in shape. There's existing pavement in the front yard for driveway, parking, and small basketball area. The backyard has large trees and a large existing patio. The backyard also is, has an underground sprinkler system, which really would make it pretty difficult to, to put a garden shed under those conditions. The, the lots and the setting of the house is, that's the way it was when I bought it, I think it was back in 19, 2017, and there is, there's no other place for storage on, on the lot. The let's see, I have the house, it's a ranch house, there's no second floor, it's, it has a partial basement, but in the basement, there's enough room for laundry, furnace, hot water tank, and a sump pump area. The, the garage would be good, but I have a lot of, you know, it would be good for storage, but at, right now, I can only get one car in the garage, it's a two-car garage. So the other car has to go, you know, park it outside. But going down, if, if you drive up and down Glenview Road, you will notice that there's quite a few sheds that are in clear view, mine would not be in clear view because of the location, there's trees and bushes and other landscaping that would conceal it somewhat. Yeah, it's, it's tucked, it's in the northwest corner of the lot. It's, it is about 60 feet from the closest house, and that would be, the neighboring house, I mean, and that would be 430 Vine Street, and the shed would not impair any air or lighting to any adjoining properties. Yeah, yeah, the shed is really not that visible from the street, because it is, it is kind of concealed by the trees and the landscaping. There was the, I'm going to, I would like with your permission to construct a shed using the best materials in an attractive style. And the neighbors to the west of me, they have a shed on their property, very close to the proposed shed. So that's that's my story, I, I hope you grant me permission to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mian, there may be questions from, from the board members, Mr. Mian.
Sure.
Sure, this is Bob Sermon, hi, Mr. Mian, I do have a couple of questions, have you had any contact with your neighbors regarding this?
Well, yes, I, I, I did, and I, they have absolutely no objection to the shed being built. I contacted, I had a note Andrew, he lives at, on what's his address, the one on Vine, on Vine Street, and also, I think it's 430 Vine, and the other, the other house just directly west, he is a, he's a gentleman that lives in India just about all the time, I've never met him. But his tenant said that she would have no objection at all to, to the shed being built where it is.
Okay, I do have, I do have one other general comment that, that isn't obvious at first glance when you look at the plan, that I noticed when I was out there, because there always, there always is a concern when you're putting a leaner structure and creating more impervious area. But what I noticed when I was out there, that this, the, the area that it's on is a asphalt driveway, and when I saw you out there, you mentioned that that was a, a past easement of some type, so.
Yes.
I guess the, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure what direction I'm gonna go to vote, but, you know, if you were to put it in your backyard, you wouldn't be increasing impervious area in the neighborhood, but putting it where it is, you're not increasing the impervious, because it already is, so I just wanted to share that in case other board members hadn't noted that.
So Bob, this is Brad, I, I noticed that, and I'm trying to figure out, and I don't know who answered this question, is this Lisa or is this someone else, why there's a 4.55% front yard impervious surface coverage variation, because you're right, this would sit on, on not the concrete section of the driveway, but the asphalt section of the driveway, so is there something that, at least I'm missing here?
So Brad, to answer your question, I was going off the plat of survey, which does not show any of that existing paving, if, if you are correct, both, both of you, if it, if there is existing paving and it's sitting on top of that, that is not an expansion of the paving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Lisa, would that be removed from the request then, or it still may, stays in the request, and, or how does that work?
We can remove it, I think that's, I think that's, I mean, I don't know that you guys need to make a change now, but it probably is proper to have it removed.
Let me ask a question about that, Lisa, we've dealt with many legal non-conforming homes in the various applications we review, and many times the request is much larger than what's actually being added, because the existing home exceeds whatever the parameter is, and in this case, because the existing home exceeds the impervious surface, wouldn't that need to be in there as a matter of course?
Not if they are not adding to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it seems to me, Lisa, that we're, what we're really talking about, the, the, the 207 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation assumes that the, the structure will be, would, would have been constructed on a pervious surface or a grassy, but instead it's being constructed on an impervious surface, so in effect, we can approve that variation, I guess, because it already exists. And the only thing of substance in this request is the 14-foot front yard setback, is that correct?
I, I believe that sums it up, yes.
I guess the, the one comment I have is, you know, it is requesting the variation is 207, you know, that little, that shed is not 207, so there was already an overage from the concrete. I guess if it was really a critical case, though, Lisa, you would send somebody out and they'd do a new calculation, right, showing that?
Right, yeah, I, you know, whatever, whatever we decide to do tonight, I'm gonna go take a look.
Okay.
And I, I, I guess we did just do, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but if you look at this drawing that we're looking at now, the solid surface, asphalt surface continues from what is shown there all the way essentially to the western fence, I think, is that correct, Mr. Mian?
Yes, that's correct.
So I don't know what the, whether the 207 square feet, the variation, whether that includes not just the 80-square-foot shed, but the area underneath the shed that has already been asphalted. And whether that's an important issue or not. Lisa?
Right, so the, so again, because the asphalt doesn't show on the plat of survey, it is not included in the coverage, so it's, you are correct that if, if that's, if this area is all paved in already, the existing would be more than what's recorded in the request. But again, if, if he's putting this shed on top of an existing structure and not increasing the coverage, however over it may already be, we would not call that out as new coverage.
Right.
Mr. Mian, what is the date of the plat of survey that we're looking at?
Um. And I don't know. Is it the large one, are you looking at the official plat of survey, there should be a date on that.
Lisa's checking.
Okay.
I don't have a copy of the whole thing, so the date is not on any of my copies.
And when, when was the asphalt on which the shed will sit, or on which the framing of the shed currently sits, when was that asphalt laid?
Well, way before I, I bought it, I had, there was a, there was a, a guy that worked for Wilmette, it was the water department, and he, he said he was around a long time, and I, you know, he was just over and just kind of shooting the breeze for a while, and he said he can remember, he's from the area, he can remember when this was like a, a passageway to Vine, Vine Street, where there's presently a cul-de-sac, I guess it was in the development of it, whenever, I, I believe it was in the late 50s.
Thank you.
Mr. Mian?
So I guess it really properly reflected what was there, no matter what the date is on the survey.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Mr. Mian, could you?
Go ahead, Riley.
I think that was a statement by Mr. Sermon rather than a question.
Yes.
I, I, Mr. Mian, I wanted to ask, why it is that you don't feel like you could put the shed on the, excuse me, east or west sides of the house, rather than in the front yard, putting it in the side yard?
Well, to the, to the east, there's a fence, the other side of the fence is the, the really nice-looking park. There you know, would not really looked at, and it's wide open over there, where it is, where I propose to put it, it's not wide open, not that many people would notice it, whereas if it was on the east end, it would be very noticeable, so I'm trying to conceal it as best I can.
So Lisa, would it be correct to say that, that the 207 square foot, that you are impervious surface variation, that you're, we're talking about, absent the shed, which is 80 square feet, it would be the existing situation technically, based on the survey, is 127 feet, is that correct? Without the shed?
You're damn, the overage, the current overage of the concrete.
Whether there's a shed there or not, it sounds like there are.
Right.
Right, and then again, then that's not including the asphalt paving we're talking about.
Excludes the asphalt, that's correct.
Right.
So how should we reward this, assuming we need to deal with it?
Well, I guess, one, the one question before we modify that is, does anybody have a difficulty with the, the front yard setback?
I, I'll say that I'm concerned about the size of the setback, but I find it persuasive that if it were located in the backyard, we would be adding more impervious surface, and in a sense, using the existing asphalt in the front yard is a way of situating the shed on a firm surface without adding impervious surface. And this property, in a sense, also benefits from the fact that you have the large parkway on Glenview Road that we talked about at our last meeting, when there was a proposal for a two-car garage addition. that we talked about at our last meeting when there was a proposal for a two-car garage uh, addition. Um, I, I think overriding in this case is the fact that we would uh, keep the applicant from adding impervious surface in the backyard. I, I believe there's room in the backyard for it, uh, sprinkler and trees notwithstanding, but um, this allows him to use an asphalt service, surface that already exists uh, without adding to it in the backyard.
I would agree with Maria, and I would add one more thing, and that is, if this were anywhere else in the village, I might have a problem with it, but the weird thing about Glenview Road, the 2,400 block, it consists of one house. That's Mr. Mian's house. It's the only house in the 2,400 block. And you don't really, because of the angle that you approach it on, you don't, you won't, I don't think you'll actually see the shed. I know that when I pulled up, I didn't know what I was looking for until I got out of my car, walked onto the driveway, and of course, it's already been started, so it's easy to see where it is once you're there, but I don't think you'll notice it when you will be driving by, and no other neighbor is going to be bothered by it.
Yeah, this is Chris. I agree, and I have to say that um, as he was mentioning, if he put it over on the east side of the property, I think it would be a lot more visible because just at the angle of the road when you're driving east. So it really is tucked in um, in a very discreet spot.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm not sure that I agree 100% with the discreet aspect of it. I drove past um, today and saw Mr. Sermon to, you know, a, a, on the property and saw the, the framing of the shed and um, from the road as I drove past, and that's without a roof structure or walls. You know, uh,
I think it's more visible with you coming east.
I agree, it was.
Regardless, I, I, I think that the, of the uh, the lot um, dictate that that's probably the best location for it.
I was just gonna say, it was obvious to me because it had a blue roof on it from the tarp, and I don't anticipate that being the, the final color, so.
Any other questions? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think the hardship here is the um, shape of the lot and the location of the house on the lot. Um, and as Mr. uh, Mian says, there, there is a shed literally on the other side of the property line from the location where he is proposing to put his shed, so.
Okay, any other questions from Mian? Mr. Mian?
I have no other questions.
Thank you. Any other comments you have, Mr. Mian? I'll give, give you the last word.
Uh, no, I, excuse me, I think all your questions were very, very appropriate and um, you know, just, I have nothing else to say. I um, I, I try to be a good neighbor. I want to keep up my property, and I'm gonna keep up the shed if, uh, if you let me build it. Um, and I'm gonna try to make it as attractive as possible. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mian. Uh, Lisa, have we had, do we have any co- other comments on this case?
Uh, no email, no comments on the YouTube chat, and no one else is uh, joining us through Teams.
Thank you, and now I think we can close testimony and, and have a motion.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 14-foot front yard setback variation to permit the construction of a shed on the legal non-conforming structure at 2401 Glenview Road in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second that.
Go ahead.
I, I am able to support this request. The fact that the asphalt is already there and will require no new impervious surface um, is um, persuasive. I think the hardship is the shape and the size of the lot. And um, as a homeowner who has a shed that's bursting with extra things that don't fit in my two-car garage, I um, I understand the need for additional storage space. I'll be supporting this.
Thank you.
And I too can support it. Uh, I, you know, ideally would not like to have a shed in the front yard at all, anywhere. Um, and I think it was Mr. Felkoff who said that if it was in a different location, that would be a, a much more of a consideration. Um, but um, um, the only thing that I can think of that might be a drawback, and this would be tremendously ironic, is if Mr. Mian decided already that he wanted to have a bright blue, blue roof on his shed. Um, I, I, I don't think that would be the case, and so I can support it.
Any other comments?
This is Bob Sermon. I concur with my colleagues on everything.
I do too.
Same. No other comments?
Yeah, I, I also, I think the circumstances of all the things we've talked about, the shape of the lot, the location and the fact that there's no incremental impervious surface requirement or variation, and the fact that it's along a very busy street with a wide parkway. I can support it also. The, clearly the hardship is the shape of the lot, and, and so I can go and support it. So, can we take a vote?
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this is a positive recommendation, Mr. Mian. It will be, uh, go to the board on the 10th, November 10th. You may want to be there, and um, good luck and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening.
You too.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020 Z33.
Second that.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. We have one more item on the, the agenda.
Um, I, I move to recommend uh, approval of minutes from September 16, 2020.
I'll second that.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
I think uh, if there anyone, Lisa, that wants to speak uh, out there?
I don't see anyone left in our meeting that hasn't already spoken.
Can, can I move to adjourn?
Uh, you need a motion and a second and a roll call, please.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, okay. Uh, Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
Bye-bye.